Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I want to apologize, we ran a little late in our executive session. And anyone who's ever been to our meetings in person knows, we quite often do the same thing. So, at this point, we have, have we had roll call?
At this time, you want to call the meeting to order? I will go ahead with the Open Public Meeting Act. On Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Ag Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ag Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. On Friday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty, notice of this meeting virtually was posted on our website and social media.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Delabarka?
Lou Delabarka is here.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis is absent. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price? You're muted, Mr. Price. I do see you at the meeting. He's giving me a thumbs up. When he gets a chance, he'll unmute and stay present. Okay. Mrs. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Castellano?
Here.
And Mr. Price, are you able to unmute?
Mr. Price is here and unmuted. Thank you.
There he goes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, at this time, we're, we are all going to say the Pledge of Allegiance together when the flag appears on our screen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So, welcome, welcome, everyone, to our regular meeting for May. And we're, we're moving along. We think we're doing a little better with virtual meetings, but I'm not sure. Every time we think we're getting a little better, we seem to find a new, a new glitch that, that hits us. But in any event, first, I'm going to ask for a motion on the minutes, and that's four point one and four point two.
Second.
Sullivan and Mrs. Byrd, what's that?
Any discussion? Can we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. So, before we go to our superintendent's report, I'm just going to say a quick, brief introduction. And I, I do apologize for repeating from prior meetings, but I think there's things that, that we need to, to say often during these times. And I, you know, I just want to begin by thanking all of our faculty and staff. I want to thank Dr. Gruccio, and I want to thank Ms. Sanaya for their leadership. I want to thank all the members of our faculty and staff. Our students continue to learn. We're continuing to provide meals for our students who are in need. That program has been expanded. So, please, anyone who may be in need of that, please reach out to us. And we're also providing help and counseling to, to students who are in need. So, if there's anything that we can do for you, please contact your teacher, contact your counselor, reach out to us, and we will do the best we can to try and help you. We know these are trying times, and I'm just very, very proud of all of our faculty and staff for how hard they're working and the job that they're doing for our students. So, with that, I will turn the floor over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our virtual meeting. It seems to be the way of life these days, and we're getting better and better at it. Except regarding my superintendent's report, it's always a little different virtually until we get this Google Meet coordinating with videos, and I hear that's going to be coming down the road soon. So, at this point, what I want to do is, once again, highlight my Smores District Newsletter. What I'm going to do is hopefully quickly turn over to present now and take you through that. If you do not see it, and for those of you in the audience, do know that it can be found on our district website underneath the superintendent's report and under the Board Reports section. It's by Board Meeting, listed by dates, okay? So, we're going to present now. I'm going to go to that Smores. Mr. Castellano, I'll ask you, can you see it? Yes, no?
Not at this time.
How about now? Again, we have to present my entire screen.
Not yet.
Yes.
But I feel
Okay.
I feel we are getting warmer. I can feel it.
How about now?
We're getting warmer.
Ms. Sanaya?
Present your entire screen and then hit Present again. You have to click on it and then hit Present.
I have to click on what?
So, present now.
Right, I got that. Present my
My entire screen. Click on the actual screen and hit Share.
Gotcha.
There you go.
There we go. All right.
That's, that's the steps involved.
How about that? I just, I just presented it. No?
Not yet.
How about Ms. Sanaya, you find it for me on the
Or is it in, is it in our Google Drive?
There you go. I just got a button. How about now?
No.
No. Sorry about that. So, here we go. Entire screen. I'm going to No, it won't let me now share.
Okay, if Leanna can help, can you share with me, Leanna, and I'll go ahead and present, or if you want to present, Leanna, from your end?
We're, we're going to present it here in a second.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry about that. It worked before. These are frustrations. But as Leanna gets it up for you, the Smores is sent out every Monday morning to the staff. Leanna Mullen then places it on the Facebook page for the community to be able to see and read through. Gives an update on my random thoughts of consciousness and as well as what's going on in the district for the week. Also, I broke it down through our district, by our district learning goals. And I'm going to quick, quickly take you through that because there are many exciting happenings in our district that are worthy of sharing publicly right now. Do I see it? See it in one of the blocks here.
Yeah, you're, you're good to go, Dr. Gruccio.
I am good to go.
I'm seeing it.
You're seeing it? Okay, good. I am going to go to it. Okay, so, under the area of the current reality is where I basically share that we all realize right now that we are one month away from the last day of school. Encourage my staff and students to stay, of course, with virtual learning and to let everyone know that we are following the district calendar. And with that said, this Monday, May twenty-fifth, is Memorial Day, so we are off. We're virtually off. There will be no teaching and learning that day. That is a family day and a national celebration. Virtual learning, teaching and learning will resume on Tuesday. And we encouraged and had conversations with our teachers to prepare that for that day off, either this week or to catch up next week during their virtual help time for any students that missed anything on Monday, in that Monday's schedule. Last week, we had teacher retrieval of materials through, throughout the district. The teachers were entered to school buildings with their proper masks on and protection on to go into their classrooms to retrieve any materials they needed to continue with virtual teaching and also to quickly close out their classrooms the best that they could. Next week, we are planning for students to come in, and I am announcing that right now, that on between the dates of May twenty-sixth and May twenty-ninth, that's Tuesday through Friday, between the hours of two PM and six PM, the students will be able to come in to retrieve their belongings. Now, please, I urge you to stay tuned to your principal's instructions. So, everyone should tune into their web, their school websites, wait to hear from their principals. It will be shared on social media. It will be shared through phone calls for when and how that's going to happen. So, that will be a discussion that we are having right now with you, but that information will come out in a structured method. Just keep in mind that every school is different. I think you know that. But one thing I can guarantee from my seat right here is that we will be adhering to social distancing mandates, okay? They will be in effect, so I'll leave it at that. We have a closure update, and as we go through this document, I don't know if Leanna's moving it for me or not, but we are at student achievement, and we, we share our tips for virtual learning and let everybody know that we're open and to create a routine, and I encourage my staff to do that because working from home can take an effect on the social, emotional well-being. I know myself, I have a structured routine, but also make sure you take time, you know, before hours or after hours to take care of yourself. You know, I always refer to walking, riding my bike, playing my piano, just to get some release because I can tell you, the anxiety does build up at, at times. So, we're all in this together. We all, we're dealing it with it differently. And as Mr. Castellano said, if there's any needs that anyone has, please reach out because, you know, we can definitely relate to the frustration. Sometimes I go on with this virtual lifestyle that we're living. Full-day kindergarten, please, please know that and spread the word that registration is now open, and we encourage our full-day kindergarten participants to register. Information is here. There's links here also on our websites. Our Fine and Performing Arts, we have great performances every week. They, they continue to amaze me, whether it's students or supervisors or teachers. They're all in this together. They're, these kids are practicing and performing, and we'll talk a little bit more at the end about the great things that we have coming up for those, those students and for our school community. AP Testing began on May eleventh. Those students have been studying and taking online tests. Our mock trial team was honored before the US Congress, and Congressman Jeff Man Drew mentioned Ag Harbor Township in the great program we have and the accomplishments that our students had, particularly in Atlanta County, with the Atlanta County Championship. Miller School Aspire Program went virtual, just like everything else, but it's great that we have some after-school activities for our students. We have Harry Potter at Home, the next phase that we are sharing with our school community. Getting into the climate and culture, we are continuing with the essential workers in serving the food, creating the, the meals, serving and delivering the meals. Maintenance staff and facilities are on board, as well as our business department, doing what we need to do. Security guards assisting in whatever needs that we have. We also have wellness checks going on throughout the community. So, you may have received a knock, knock on the door from one of our staff that just asking how things are going, and if you need anything, we are here. So, we're reaching out physically as well. Pledge of Allegiance every morning, that's great stuff. Anybody, any board members want to participate? Just let us know, and we'll, you know, record that and get that on for you one of our mornings. Last week, we honored special education and our educators who, and who are dedicated to our special education students and all the great things that they do for them. We appreciate them. Social, emotional, mental health support, there's a whole list here of resources. And when we, when they come in, we share them with our students and our parents in English and in Spanish. And here, each week, I highlight videos that our teachers have made. This week, here's a video from our Medical Science Academy students. It's a heartfelt thanks to our Ag Harbor Township community. A great job from those students who came up with the idea themselves, put it together, and shared it with Mr. Verlardi, our supervisor of science, who shared it with us. So, that's awesome. Snail mail delivery from Fernwood Renaissance. I got mine in my, in the mail. Thank you so much for the postcard, which states just a big whole thank you and that they appreciate all that's being done, just to keep that unity amongst our members. Community partnerships, we continue with the meal distribution. Close nine thousand meals are being set up for pickup and delivery, and we post their schedules over the weekend, and that happens on Mondays. Free and reduced lunch program, again, if your situation changed, please know that you can be eligible for the district free and reduced lunch program. I also want to emphasize regarding the meals that we are distributing, we are distributing and serving anyone who needs meals, okay? I want to make that clear. Atlanta County Food Bank is assisting us, as well as Chick-fil-A. Continuing with social, emotional, mental health, Mr. Santilli has, is sharing the Pursuing Public Health videos that, and interviews that he is doing. Again, helpful resources, whether it's social, emotional, mental. This one has to do with diet and nutrition. Nacho Latina, this was highlighted in the current, but do you know that our Jenny Dilks from Fernwood Avenue Middle School was gracious enough to set this up, as she does physically every year, but she said, you know what, we can do this virtually too. So, the parents gathered, and it was a great success. So, it was very good that we were able to communicate with our Latino families. And she, she went over, you know, how to go to the website, virtual learning schedules, and so on and so forth. It was a great job, and thank you, Jenny Dilks. We are EHT Strong. This is a community effort. We're proud to be able to partner with the Ag Harbor Township Parks and Recs, as well as our EHT Mayor's Wellness Campaign. So, we are hashtag EHT Strong. Virtual guest speakers, this is really cool to see that we're having guest speakers come in and speak to our Google Meet classroom. So, it was a good job right there with our Academy of Law and Business. Virtual needs assessments for Perkins. Dr. Graham had her stakeholders have, hold a meeting, and they reviewed the Perkins grant. So, that was neat to do that virtually. Of course, we're in a virtual board meeting. And finally, here, the section that I always like to put regarding athletics and fine and performing arts. The show must go on, and anyone who's involved in fine and performing arts know that, no matter what, the show's going to go on. And our students are not only practicing but at home, but they are ready for virtual stage performances. And under the direction of Dr. Mark Kadetsky, right here, you'll see the Fine and Performing Arts Virtual Spring Showcase Series. So, again, trying to adhere to our school district calendar. I'm very proud of this department and what they have done to adhere to the dates. And some of them differ, but pretty much to adhere to the performances that they, they were looking forward to. So, as you see here, you have everything from choral to dance, to band, orchestra, art classes and the theater class, which will be doing an evening of monologues and scenes from La Misera. So, very, very proud. I can't wait. The first one is Memorial Day at nine AM. And From Sea to Shining Sea will be performed from our stu, by our students vocally and instrumentally, and you will not be disappointed, trust me. Clubs and activities, so you know, are preparing for end-of-the-year events that they, they discussed. Most, all were canceled, but they're also preparing for next year. They're honoring their seniors, as well as electing officers for next year. Checked in with Mr. Pellegrino, and he keeps me abreast of what's going there. Sad news was, and we shared this before, is that the athletics and the competition for our spring sports canceled. But I do want to stress that these students are still working hard. They're still practicing. They're still receiving workouts. I'm in their Google classrooms. Coaches give the workouts. Kids give the feedback, and it's a great relationship that's going on virtually. So, right here, we have some links that's going on right now for our parents to link on to regarding NJSIA and NCAA information. Having a discussion with Mr. Pellegrino, the National Federation for High School Sports is beginning to release ideas. In other words, Plan A, B, and C for next year, and maybe what the fall season would look like, the, the winter season, but implementing and brainstorming about the, the guidelines that have to be followed. On a positive note, in, in our world of sports, we're beginning to see honor, teams honoring their seniors. So, here, just this week, Coach Carmichael and the baseball team honored their senior athletes. So, that was really cool, very, very touching. He shared pictures of him and, and players. As you see, maintaining social distancing. Our athletic trainer shares workouts, and finally, you'll see our weekly digital newsletters. If you click on each one, you'll see from high school down to elementary schools, along with our media specialists and our nursing services, all the great things that are going on in our district. Very, very proud, but it's one-stop shopping. It's all right here for you to see. So, thank you for that, for, for listening to, to me explain all that. But I do have some end-of-the-year updates that I think you're going to find interesting because they are hot off the press. What I have here, let me just see if I can get this up, so I make sure I'm precise in what I'm sharing because, again, it's hot off the press, and it's end-of-the-year updates. So, for the high school, the administration is coming out of discussions with students, and this is what has been presented to me as late as this afternoon. They decided that they cannot have the prom. The, the venue is not open, and we're running out of, of time for that. Varsity Scholars is coming up. Seven hundred students will be recognized via a virtual event on May twenty-seventh. Senior Awards, students will be, will be recognized virtually on June tenth. Putting that together, we are awaiting the arrival of yearbooks and capping gowns. The high school is planning some ideas that they have here that I'm going to share. But honestly, I'm going to tell you, we're hopeful for the governor to change his mind about graduation, but at this time, we're going to begin with virtual planning. So, student administration speeches are due at the end of this month, and we're looking to record them so that you can see them the same way, same way you would see them, like, say, last year, okay? So, an example I would give, Mr. Castellano, and I know that we have to prepare our speech. We know that we're going to go to the high school field and present from the dais or the podium on the high school field, okay? Plan A, the high school tells me, they're hoping that one plan would be an outdoor student drive-up stage. Student walks up, grabs their diploma, takes a picture, gets, goes off the stage, gets in their car, leaves. Plan B would be an indoor graduation diploma retrieval, if you will, students only, students only. Student would come in one side of the building, walk across the stage, get the diploma, leave the other side of the building. Or Plan C, we go totally virtually, virtual, and I think some of you have seen some of them, hence Rowan, Stockton, and some of the college graduations. All in all, June eighteenth is the date of graduation, and we are sticking to that date. Moving to middle school, again, regarding their trip, there's no way to have a trip right now. The venue is not open. National Honor Society and the dance has been moved to the fall, and that's all pending the social distancing guidelines. And the eighth-grade awards will be done virtually. The, the principals will communit, be communicating this information very, very soon with the community. But again, you got it hot off the press. Mr. Castellano, that concludes the superintendent's report for this week.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Fantastic report, and I think it's obvious to anyone watching and listening. Learning is going on. Our kids are engaged, and that's why we're here. And even though we're in this difficult and unprecedented time, we're continuing to educate the students, and we're engaging them and involving them, and, and that's why we're here. So, again, I'm, I'm so pleased with that. There is some good news, and, and this is certainly it, what we're, what we're doing and what, what you heard and what you saw. So, I thank you. At this point, I believe we have a little recognition for some special people.
Yes, we do. We, we just want to reach out right now and congratulate and give our thanks to our board reps. Because we don't have their plaques right now, I'm going to ask them to come to our work session in June. However, when we, when we think of our board reps, you know, we see them sitting there with us in our, in our live meeting. So, they too had to adjust to this situation of being virtual, and I am so proud of their flexibility all year long, but especially during this time, how they're joining us in this, in this meeting. They always come prepared with information from the high school, and they represent very well. We, and I know, Mr. Castellano, you want to speak as well on behalf of the board, but I don't want this to be your last meeting, even though, you know, graduation occurs before our very last meeting of the year. That's why I invite you back to that work session so we can share with you the plaque that we have, the plaque that we traditionally give to you and hand to you. Mr. Castellano would hand to you on graduation night. So, we want to be able to work that into our graduation ceremony. Again, I want you to come back to our work session in June so we can show the public that plaque. So, please put that on your calendar, and again, I appreciate, number one, your will to be a public servant because this gives you great insight on what it's like to be an elected official, to serve your community, to, to hear what goes on in a, in a school district. And, you know, it's, it's an interesting position to be in, and I commend all the board members as well. But I especially commend you for taking this on at such a young age, I would say. And, you know, I don't know if either one of you are eighteen yet, but once you are, you know, you're going to be able to continue to serve your community. So, I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I am so proud of you as students to serve on the Board of Education, to represent your fellow students. It's a huge job. It's extra. They know you're involved in academics, you're involved in athletics, and you still take the time to get yourself to join us. So, without further ado, thank you, thank you. Mr. Castellano?
Thank you, Kim. I want to echo everything that you said. And I also want to thank you, student reps. You guys did a fantastic job for us. And you also had to make this giant leap into the virtual world with us, and we appreciate that so much. Your reports last week, you didn't skip a beat. And, you know, I, I certainly hope that this was a, a good experience for you and, and a, a learning experience and a mean, meaningful experience. We really appreciated having you with us, and, and again, we, we certainly hope that you're back. You're able to come back with us for our work meeting in June. We, we do have a plaque for you, and we want to, you know, have the opportunity, again, to, to just thank you for, for what you've done for us. We're very proud of you. We're very proud of the class of two thousand twenty. You know, they just deserve all the credit in the world, and you do. And so, with that, the floor is yours. Grace and Nick for your report. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Well, thank you. I can't really put in the words how much your words mean to me. I mean, you're all role models to me in a way, so. And I wanted to return the thanks. Thank you for everything you've been doing, not only for me and Nick, but for the entire community, your support is, I can't explain how important it is to not only us, but the entire classes twenty twenty and all the students all over the district. And it's really nice to come out here. It kind of gives, me personally, I can't speak for Nick or anyone else, but a sense of normalcy. And it's just, it's nice to see you're all doing okay, and it's nice to see your faces, so thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. You know, I, I appreciate the warm welcomes that you've given us throughout the, the coming Yes, yes, thank you very much. Uh you know, I I appreciate the warm welcomes that you've given us throughout the uh the coming months. And uh I really do appreciate the experience and the the privilege of of being on the board with the fellow members in this call.
Okay, I just can't believe how quickly the year went. I mean, I just feel like, you know, we're like two or three months in and here we are wishing you well and you're gonna be getting your diploma in less than a month. So again, congratulations. Um we're proud of you. We hope to see you in the future and best wishes in your uh future endeavor. So uh you know, if anything, you are the class of twenty twenty and hashtag E H P T strong and they're smiling, so that makes me smile. Thank you.
Of course. So I guess without further ado, we'll start our report. Um Nick?
Alrighty, yeah, we'll we'll keep this brief so the meeting can uh move forward. But uh we wanted to recognize a few people to start off. Um first, we wanted to recognize a senior from the high school, Malini Galati. Uh she's uh one of our attorneys on the mock trial team, which we all knew did an excellent job at the county championship. Uh she's the twenty twenty recipient recipient, yeah, of the honorable Carol E. Higbee Scholarship, which is a very prestigious thing uh in in the court for the county that they do uh award to people of high merit.
So, moving on, on the eighth of May, the Egg Harbor Township High School Teachers, Staff, Administration um all went out to deliver signs to honor the class of twenty twenty. Each student received a sign and honestly, it was a really happy experience and exciting day. A lot of um students had the opportunity to see their favorite teachers and staff that they haven't seen in months. So uh I just wanted to extend a thank you um from all the class of twenty twenty for that because it was a extremely um uplifting day for all of us.
Um we had some virtual, special virtual guest speakers uh speaking to the classes in the district. We had an actress and producer, Adrian Lovett. She made an appearance for our Alders uh Media Class and then for the high school's theater class as well last week. Um we also had a planning specialist, John Henderson, who made a uh very special guest appearance for Academy of Law and Business Entrepreneurship Class. So that was very nice to see those people uh come out and add to the educational experience.
Uh I just wanted to reiterate um how much of success uh Noche Latina was this year, um especially being the first ever virtual Noche Latina. So um thank you to Mrs. Dilks, who made it was it was a huge success with uh lots of information, um lots of opportunities for parents to ask questions and get answers. Um and I even liked the fact that uh pizzas were delivered to all the families that participated. So overall, a huge success and thank you to everyone involved.
And uh a very important one, in my opinion, are our National Honor Society officers who are recently elected. And we have a uh new president for our Honor Society. And I'd like to congratulate President Ethan Saw for his newly elected position. And I do hope the uh next administration coming forth for Honor Society uh is um excellent in executing its duties.
And I just kinda wanted to finish by uh giving a huge shout out to everyone, the staff, the students involved in a very different uh take on the AP testing year. It's been tricky with some ups and downs um and thanks to the AP staff and the AP testing coordinator, Ms. Wexler at the high school. It's honestly running very smoothly and good luck to everyone who has tests the rest of the week.
I do believe that is the uh the end of our report and uh it was a pleasure, certainly was.
As always, thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it. And uh I have a junior at home taking AP exams, so I have a little bit of an idea. But uh um thank you guys again so much, really. And you know, the class of twenty twenty um can't say enough good things. Uh I see board members.
Really, really quick, I just wanna say that um I just got a chance to meet Nick this year, Mr. Seppi. And I love talking to him. I love to hear your voice. And I just wanted to say to to Grace, she may not remember this, but Grace Baumgartl, I remember when she literally was running around um with her mom and her older, I had her brothers in school. And they're great young men and I remember when she was, again, I thought, oh, you had a baby, Miss um Baumgartl. And you know, I was like, wait, when you first came, when I said, wait a minute, I was like, that's the little girl that I used to saw, that I used to see running around with her mom at the field to watch her brothers play. Um I forget what sport it was, but they were playing this sport and you out there with your mom watching them. So it's just really good to see you and give your family and your brothers my love and your mom and everybody.
Of course, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you guys very much. And so at this point, we're going to move to our first public comment period. Uh this is um for agenda items. So we'll take questions or comments, comments on the agenda only. And uh Chandra will work that. Um we uh as most of you know, we cannot discuss either personnel or litigation. Um and should you have a a complicated issue, it may be necessary for a member of our administration to get back to you uh with a response.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. At this time, we are accepting public comment six oh nine, six five three zero one hundred, extension one four one seven. Um please do not leave a message. Please keep calling until the line is open. Thank you. Okay, at this time, Mr. Castellano, it has been out for a minute. Um no phone calls coming in.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh we are going to um we are going to move now to finance and operations. Um and before we uh uh go ahead and vote on those items, I'm gonna ask either uh whether our uh committee chair or our administration representative has any updates for us uh this week.
I will turn that over to Chandra if anything new has happened this week.
Uh pretty much just updated the app items for action. We did upload some grants that have to be submitted. Um it's pretty much the biggest highlight. Thank you.
Okay, um with that, then I'm going to look for a motion on eight point one through uh eight point one four. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Uh okay, Mr. Price and uh Ms. Gilbert Floyd, do we have any discussion on finance and operation items? Hearing none, may we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Thank you all. Uh moving now to personnel, um are there uh any updates uh from administration uh for this week?
Just I know that you're taking action on the major personnel shift into full day kindergarten for that program starting in September. And it was a pleasure seeing the high caliber professionals that are interested in kindergarten next year.
Great, great. Glad to hear that. Um so then I'm looking for a motion on nine point one transfers. May I have a motion?
So made, Lou Delabarka.
Ms. Floyd, second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on personnel? Hearing none, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Moving to policy, uh before, again, before we take action, do we have uh any updates this week? Either from our committee chair or from administration?
The only up- The update.
The the only updates are um for policy three two one eight and four two one eight, just some uh clarification and consistency in language um in regards to teaching staff members and the use of support staff throughout both policies uh as reflected as such in the uh uploaded board docs.
Very good. Thanks. Uh Ms. uh Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, anything, an- anything to add?
Nope, I was just gonna say that there was discussed that work session as well. The changes.
Very good. Thank you. Can I have a a motion, please, on ten point one through ten point four?
Motion. We're on it, Mr. Price.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on policy? Hearing none, may we have a roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Sorry for the delay. Mr. Price, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, uh moving into new business, um before we um consider new business, I just wanna give a brief uh legislative update. We talked in some depth uh about that uh um set of bills uh moving its way through the legislature. Um we uh did advocate against those bills. Um and along uh along with uh many other boards and many other education groups. Um they did, they did pass uh last weekend, were signed. However, there were some uh noteworthy changes uh to that uh legislation that I think will be favorable and helpful uh to the districts uh throughout the state. Um giving a date certain uh when payments need to be made. Um it's, it would still be um, I think, my uh my wish that we continue to pass this resolution as it's consistent with the uh the uh sentiment of the board. And um so with that, uh that's, you know, what I wanna report out on uh legislation. I also need to ask uh if it was necessary to add uh a um a resolution eleven point four, or is that remaining a placeholder? I didn't, I didn't hear anything uh since.
It is eleven point one through eleven point three.
Okay, very good. So uh then the motion uh we have is on eleven point one uh through eleven point three. Uh if I could have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on uh new business, um new business eleven point one through eleven point three? Hearing none, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much on that. Uh moving uh to old business, uh we need now to uh vote on uh H I B. And uh I believe I'm gonna ask um Mrs. Hauck Alco for for the resolution.
I would ask the board to entertain a motion to affirm the confidential H I B information that was shared with you at the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty board meeting. And those cases are as follows: D A V zero three, J D M zero five, J D M zero six, J D M zero seven, A three, A four, A five, F ten, and F eleven, all nineteen twenty, as shared with you at our last board meeting in the confidential update.
Thank you. May I have a motion on that, please?
So made.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um just a a brief word on the board calendar. Uh I would just ask that everyone uh please be prepared to be flexible uh in the month of June, uh especially and really all going through the summer. Uh I think, you know, we covered last week that uh we're expecting um a lot of information that we're going to have to process and possibly act on. So I would just ask that everyone please be flexible as we may have to make some adjustments uh to the calendar. And then also that we have a uh New Jersey School Boards Atlantic County Association meeting coming up uh in June. Um what's the date on that, Mr. Delabarka?
June ninth.
June ninth. Very good. Glad to hear. Um I think I've already signed up for it. I'm gonna have to double check. I'm pretty sure I have. Um so with that, we're gonna move again to second, um our second comment period, which can be on any topic uh that you wish. Uh again, for three minutes. And um you know, we uh again are are not able to speak about personnel or litigation. And uh should you have a a a comp- complex uh issue, it may be necessary for our administration, you know, to get back to you um with a response.
At this time, Mr. Castellano, it has been displayed for a full minute and the phone has not rung.
Okay, so um Okay, so um, I guess tonight, we just had a, a large audience, but not a lot of comments, so that's okay, you know?
Um, Mr. President, if you please, the phone is ringing now.
All right.
Okay, public comment. Name and address, please. Go ahead with your public comment.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for your service. I truly appreciate it. I am just calling in to follow up on questions regarding E S Y and compensatory services, particularly for our special education population. And I'm wondering if um, Dr. Gugio or the administration has given any thought to thinking about coupling in compensatory services along with E S Y. In other words, you know, a lot of students are gonna be owed compensatory services. Have you thought about putting some of those compensatory services or making some of that, um, some of that loss up during E S Y?
Thank you for your comment.
I'm gonna, tha- thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much, um, Ms. Butcher for, for calling in and uh, being a good partner with, with the district as always. And uh, I'm gonna uh, see uh, Dr. Gugio if uh, this is something we can address at this point, or if we need to uh, get back in touch.
Yes, Mr. Castellano, um, of course, you know, we, we will be able to share more details, but we are absolutely exploring all options. I had a discussion with Mr. Santilli today. I know he has just met with um, our special education supervisors yesterday. And we will have a plan very, very soon. We're this close to announcing um, our plan. So thank you, Mrs. Butcher, for your comments. Um, and we are in the planning stages with those um, intricacies all involved. Thank you.
Very good, and thank you again. Anyone else?
The phone has not um, rung since the last call, so we'll give it another thirty seconds, I guess. Okay, it's been displayed for another thirty seconds with no comments.
Okay, well, we thank those members of the public who are uh, joining us and who
Having a ball with us. That's, we have a phone call coming in. Hold on.
Okay, well, that's why we're here.
Okay, public comment. You're on live stream. Name and address, please.
David and Amber Uflit, six five one two Mill Road, Agrover Township. Just wanted to uh, call in and say thank you to everybody for um, what everyone's done for the last few months. Uh, kids have really felt in the online learning. Teachers have been great. Time department has been absolutely wonderful. We had an AP exam this week. Um, you know, a few little ups and downs as uh, the rep stated earlier, but uh, we made it through and AP teachers were amazing and awesome. Really supported to teach uh, the kids throughout the process. Um, we just wanted to, you know, thank you and say hello and say thank you to all of you guys for what you're doing and uh, the extra miles that you're going and uh, appreciate everything.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much to uh, Mr. and Mrs. Uflit. We appreciate that very much. And uh, we certainly miss you around here. Don't be strangers.
At this time, it's been posted online for over thirty seconds with no public comment.
All right, so again, I'll thank everyone who chose just to tune in and watch and listen. Um, and, you know, uh, we'll look forward to hearing from you next time. Um, and then I'm going to now see if there are, are any comments from board members. I see Mrs. Byrd. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Um, I just wanted to add with our extended school year. I hope that, like you said, Dr. Gugio, that the plans are going to be uh, rolling out soon. I, I hope it's soon within the next week or so, or maybe two weeks, because families have to plan. And the challenges that our special education community are going through are heightened even more than some of our general education students being home and learning virtually. So getting a plan in place so that our staff are aware of what's going on and our families are aware of what's going on. That would be um, that would be very helpful to the community. Additionally, I wanted to thank uh, Mr. Castellano because he spent hours and hours and hours advocating for Agrover Township with our legislators, our local legislators. He was on the phone with them. He was sending emails. He talked to lobbyists. And he fiercely advocated for our community. Um, and it, it's very appreciated. So he's very humble with what he does. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you so much on behalf of our district.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Appreciate that. Any other board members?
Mr. Price, I have a comment.
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for your patience with the virtual meetings as we make our way through these. I know sometimes we have a couple of glitches, but we're learning as we go along, and I think we are improving. So uh, we'll keep at it. And uh, I wanna thank everybody for the great decorations. Keep decorating your homes in support of our students and class of twenty twenty. So uh, with that, I'd like to say good night and we are E H T strong. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other board members? Hearing none, uh, I'll ask administration. Any of our administrators are present?
Um, Mr. Castellano, just to clarify, for personnel, you said transfers and nine point one. Transfers are nine point two and the resolution was nine point one and nine point two. Just wanted to clarify to make sure everybody meant it will root that way. If you would like to change your vote, I'd be to know. Please, thank you. Nine point one being eliminations, creations, nine point two being transfers. That's all. Thank you.
Um, okay.
Mr. Castellano, if everybody's good with having um, that, that was their understanding of the motion that we voted on for personnel, that it was for the elimination and creation of the positions and then the transfers of those people to those positions, um, then we don't need to do anything.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Yes. I have, yes. Is uh, uh, let, let me just double check if, if everyone is okay with that. Um, nine point one and nine point two. I, I must, I, I must have misspoke.
Mr. Price, I'm okay with it. Thank you for the clarification. I'm good, Pete.
Thank you. Um, anything, uh, any, any further comments from administration?
Nope, not at this time. Thank everybody again for their support and um, we're good right now. Thank you.
All right, well then, I, I'll just take, you know, this opportunity to close. Um, thank board members, administrators, you know, uh, for tonight's meeting. And again, our faculty and staff, really keep up the great work. Keep up all the great things you're doing for our students. Um, and class of twenty twenty, uh, you know, we're with you guys. Um, and with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So made.
So made.
Motion in a second. By acclamation, I'll see hands. We are adjourned. Everyone have have a gooding. Everyone stay safe and healthy.
Aye.
Hi, everyone.